Okay, we're going to continue on. We have our committee of the whole and we have three items in front of us today. The first item is on our, get to the right page, on our adoption of the joint legislative agenda for 2017, and I'm going to turn it over to Brian Heinrich, our deputy administrator, to give us an overview.
Good afternoon, Brian Heinrich, Mayor's office. Hopefully you've had a chance to read the memo in the packet. I included our agenda from this past session, as well as a review on the Association of Washington Cities there, sort of look back on how well they did this last session. But to go back to the memo, and I referenced some of this a couple of weeks ago when I was here to talk about AIS. I think the items I have in the memo, those five there, it is a little bit smaller list as previous, as in previous years. First and foremost, continuing our emphasis on preserving and advocating for Model Toxic's Control Account dollars. I think you're aware that that's a fund that's been essentially oversubscribed in the years, previous years, and with the decline in oil prices the last couple of years, that fund is incredibly stressed. That said, we have some significant cleanup projects on our waterfront that we would like to secure some MACA dollars for. Segue into the next item, implementing our infrastructure projects and improvements. This is essentially a holdover, making sure that the projects that we received in the 2015 transportation package are retained, and the mayor can certainly speak to this. Just because you're on a list doesn't mean that you get funded, and so we want to make sure...
Just because you get funded doesn't mean you get to keep.
That's right. We want to make sure that we keep the pressure, as it were, on legislators to retain those projects, they're incredibly important to us. And you'll notice throughout here that these are not just specific to Bellingham. Just a reminder, this is our, in partnership with the Port of Bellingham in Wacom County, and so you'll see things like that second bullet, that's at a request of the Port of Bellingham to seek some funding for Federal Navigation Channel in support of the working waterfront economy. I previously mentioned aquatic invasive species, we're moving forward, hopefully next session with the legislation that will create and fund that program. Fiscal sustainability, that's a pretty broad topic, but essentially that's protecting, enhancing local revenue where it's possible, and again, preservation of the liquor and marijuana tax revenue, that's something that AWC and the city has advocated for for a number of years, and we've made fairly good progress on that front, but again, we want to make sure that that is retained. And then finally, criminal justice and social services funding, this is again, a holdover, we've changed the heading a little bit in the previous years to be flexible as opportunities arise in Olympia, but essentially we want to maintain the funding and support for criminal justice assistance, and then continue our advocacy for housing, substance abuse, mental health related funding, really that human services funding component.
Mayor Kelly.
Yeah, we did want to really focus it because all the attention basically is going to be on education and mental health, and Dan and I were just at a task force meeting this morning, and I think, and you can chime in, I think that if there's some facilities that they're talking about getting money to fund because we don't have enough beds, and I think that would fit under mental health related funding instead of maybe, there was a request about what can we do as a task force or as jurisdictions to support the requests for mental health beds, and I don't know, I think that would be covered under there. Do you, Dan?
Yeah, I do, I agree with you. I think the critical need for the ongoing funding for the mental health pieces, we absolutely must have it in this community. We are facing some closures of, a significant closure of Pioneer Center North scheduled in a couple of years. There's been talk about how to backfill that, but it always seems like the dollars come up a little bit short, so I think any way that we can advocate for these dollars or create them as a priority. I would also add in along those lines, two housing specific components, and that's the Prevent the Cliff and Homeless funding. This is coming from, giving a little bit, some information from Greg Winter, who is the executive director of the Opportunity Council. So this has to do with the document recording surcharge that is assessed. Out of the $48 document recording charge, $30 go to programs that reduce homelessness in Washington State. So locally, this current surcharge generates about $3.4 million per biennium. Under current law, the sunset of that $30 portion of that fee means that our community would lose about $2.1 million per biennium. And so that funding is absolutely critical to maintaining the shelter and housing safety net that we have to respond to homelessness, and I think that kind of, that is in concert with the mayor's comments in terms of mental health dollars because of the stability that that stable housing provides for folks. The other, the second one would be to support a robust state housing trust fund. We, as a community, are recognized for our leadership in providing housing and homeless reduction programs. The home fund, which is the voter approved housing levy, is producing strong results. However, the home fund's productivity is tied in large part to its potential to leverage state, federal, and private financing for housing production and preservation projects. In recent years, the housing trust fund has had fairly meager resources that limit the number of projects founded each year. Mr. Winter is saying that we need to state, we need the state to be a strong partner in our local efforts to address this affordable housing rental crisis that is evident here and throughout the state, and that the goal of that, of the Opportunity Council, which is a four county community action agency, is to bring the housing trust fund investment back to its previous level of $200 million in the state's capital budget, and I couldn't agree more, I think that's an laudable goal.
And I think, I support what Dan's talking about, and I think it would be good if, since the recording fee is expiring, but sunsetting, but we have it now, maybe to put it up under fiscal sustainability with the other fees or other areas that we're looking to maintain.
Brian, I have a question. Last year, we had support for paid sick leave at the state level, and I know there's Initiative 1433, but if for any reason that does not pass, can we still add this to our legislative agenda?
So one thing that we've done in the past is we've adopted our joint legislative agenda first, and then we've done a little bit of extra work on a Bellingham specific agenda. I'd be happy to bring that back, just by way of timing with Councilmember Hamels and the mayor's comments around the item on recording fees, I'd like to strengthen this document and get it to our partners over at the Port and County with anticipation that we can adopt something ideally in early October, and then we can do some additional work on a Bellingham specific agenda of which that could certainly be an item if that's Council's wish.
And we'll know because of the election, so we'll have a better idea.
Does that work?
Okay, wonderful. Councilmember Lillikquist.
Thanks, Minky. Two things. One, on the document recording fee, this council, before some of you were here, we have not once but twice actually written letters in support of continuing the document recording fee. So the document recording fee is not a new thing, the city of Bellingham has been behind. Its last extension was done with our support, so we'll really just be continuing what we've done in the past on that. I have a question about the 2015 transportation package. I'm not sure you mean a state package, because the question really has to do with specific priorities here at Wacom County, for example, the Bakerview interchange. Is that part of the 2015 transportation package?
Correct, and I can strengthen that language to reflect that these are local projects.
Yeah, it might be nice to point specifically not to the transportation, but in particular, the Wacom County priorities such as the interchange and whatever else the priorities are. Thank you.
And there is a regional COG priority list, and that has basically been what we've all lobbied when we've gone down to Olympia, is the list that we've all agreed to. So that's, I think, what we're talking about.
Right, and so I think that would, that priority list would be something to refer to under that bullet.
Sure.
Councilmember Hamel?
I just wanted to speak to the MACA piece here at the top. So that's a 50% match from MACA's funding. I asked Amy Cram, city attorney, to put together just some notes here. So the, for city projects like RG Haley, joint city port cleanup such as the Cornwall Avenue landfill and central waterfront sites, the city and private party cleanup such as South State Street Manufactured Gas Plant, that's at Boulevard Park, over $10 million in MACA funds are needed. And these are just the known cleanups that we, that we are currently needing funding for, and others might be discovered in the future. So the gas tax was enacted to fund the cleanups, and I believe it shouldn't be diverted for other purposes. Without the MACA match, it's very unlikely that these sites will be cleaned up and redeveloped into taxpaying, job providing, commercial or industrial ventures, or into parks with waterfront access. And again, I want to thank Amy Cram for helping me assemble some of these notes.
Councilmember Parker?
So thanks again for your work on the aquatic invasive species that we went over in our last session. What I understand is when we do things like that very proactively, and then we support the legislation for it, hopefully we'll be in line to get that funding, and I'm interested in, are we doing anything currently? I know we do a lot with housing, but with mental health related funding, so that we are primed, we've primed ourselves to really make sure that we have a program ready to go, or we've done something so when that funding comes through, is there a specific program? I know the, I've gotten quite a bit of feedback on the mental health related funding for some of our larger programs here in Bellingham, that we're housing people, but we certainly don't have the services clearly to be helping people get to a place where they might be able to move on into their own, into their own living situation. So, did I miss something? Oh, okay. So I was just interested in, because you set us up so well for the one, where are we set up for that one?
I think this is, this goes back to, we don't, in this particular case, I think what we're asking for, and the council can support or not, what we're asking for is the state to provide the beds that they need to provide locally, because it really isn't, we're not going to provide the mental health beds. So we don't really have to set ourselves up for anything. The concern I have, that I've expressed at the task force meetings, is when we, when we support the state requests, we're also talking about our own triage center, I think I'm correct. So that is something that we have set up, that we're advocating for, but it's also regional, so they're looking at regional beds, and I think we need to advocate specifically for what this community needs as far as beds go, so those can be considered when they look at regional beds, because if we're sharing a facility with Snohomish and King County and Counties North, you know, there'll be a lot of competition for the 16 beds or the 32 beds that actually get built. So the triage center, we're set up for that. The regional funding, we just need to make sure that our, that our needs are known at the state level.
So just to clarify, so then, under mental health related funding, we're primarily looking at beds versus funding in towards like case management, other things to support the things within housing?
I think when we talk about mental health beds, we talk about supportive services, so I think we're talking about the whole package, because you can't just have beds. And this discussion today was around the subject of criminal justice too, so it was people waiting in jail to get assessments, but we have people in the hospital, we have people other places waiting to get assessments at Western State, and so I think we were talking about the services and the facilities.
Councilmembers, anything else? Brian, do you feel like you...
We need a motion, Don.
Okay.
I'll move approval of the list.
Second.
Upon bringing it back to...
Perfect, I'll share this with our partners. I know the port is going to take this up next Tuesday, I believe. I'm not certain when the county will, but this is very helpful to send this with your approval onto them.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the draft joint legislative agenda for 2017. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Is there a second?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
Aye.
Good call. Motion approved, 7-0. Thank you. Thank you, Brian. Our next item today is the Planning and Community Development Department Work Update and Emerging Issues. And instead of giving an overview, I'm just going to leave that to Rick Sepler, our Planning and Community Development Director, and I'm going to turn it over to you, Rick.
Good afternoon, members of the council. We returned before you for a mid-year update. You might say it's September, it's not the mid-year, but as you recall, I think this is our first meeting since June, we haven't had the Conference of Plan before you, and that took precedence over this update. Nonetheless, work continued, and I'm joined today by PCD's Divisional Managers, Tara Sundin, Kurt Knabefeld, and Greg Alcott, who can provide background information on any questions you might have in regard to their division. The purpose of these updates are to update you on departmental status on ongoing projects associated with our work plan, you saw that earlier this year in February, and give you sort of a moment in time snapshot of what our department is doing right now. And it's also important to know what's in the queue, what are those issues that we have slated to come shortly to the work plan? Some work might be going on right now, but we haven't brought to full bear. And finally, it's very important to always keep you abreast of those emerging issues, those issues that might not be ripe for being addressed at this point in time, but we're clear, they will at some time in the near future, perhaps the next 12 to 18 months be before this body. In looking at that, I'll take it division by division, and I'll start with larger, largest division, Development Services. It's important to note that our permitting volumes are actually kind of staying a little more steady, that's not unanticipated. We had an extraordinarily busy beginning of the year and last year, and as you'll note from budget review when we get to that point in time, we've exceeded our projections substantially. Right now, in the queue, I guess is a good way of putting it too, for the development community are now of a number of permitted project, permitted projects that are beginning construction. And what we're seeing is a reduction in the number of projects that are coming before us, for example, for pre-apps or other development, but what I would say is those projects that are coming in the door tend to be more complex, have a number of more issues, and tend to be more visible sites. So we're going to be seeing increase in intensity and focus for the work, even though the volume might have decreased slightly. We do see sort of the echo of the permitting this year, in that we likely would predict at the end of 17 to see a resurgence in permitting as the market catches up on demand, and those folks who provide development become more available to provide product. We have seen the first blush back on the rental registration program, and as of about 10 days ago, we had inspected about 641 properties or units. As council might recall, we need to do about 2,700 inspections per year, per year, to make our three-year goal of seeing all those that we'll be doing. Those are per property. Of the 641, 321 passed, or passed with conditions. As you might recall, we have the ability to pass a property if the conformance is relatively minor. Put the batteries in the smoke detector, reattach this end of the railing, make sure this is connected or cover that outlet. We write a correction notice and we move on, we count on the property to do it, and they're so minor, we feel comfortable with that. However, we did have 222 properties fail on the first inspection. Of those, 114 passed on the second reinspection. A couple of notes for our inspectors out there. The first is, we're seeing evidence of recent work in many of the units we're inspecting. Folks got ahold of the checklist, they brought the building up to code, and quite frankly, we'll take it any way we can get it. If that's, if the, if the concern about the inspection prompted the repairs ahead of time, that's fine. If it's done after we get there and we know that you need to do it, that's fine too, we just want to get those life safety improvements done. In looking at our long-range division, the Conference of Plan update has been in the fore. We've reached a point in that review with outstanding the park recreation and open space review by this body over the next couple of weeks. Most of the major issues have been addressed, and a new draft based on your direction would be prepared. That new draft will be provided to the community well in advance of the October 17th public hearing, and that public hearing should get some good community input and response to some of the preliminary direction this body has selected. On deck is the Annexation Phasing Plan. As you'll note from the overview, we've already started work on that. A lot of those issues take some time to get the background materials together, we're looking a little bit at pre-existing agreements, we're looking at, they basically tripwires in essence, are there things that might occur that prompt other actions? We need to assemble that so we can be more nimble. And the long-term goal would be next year to come back before this body with a report looking at all of the independent urban growth areas and the reserve areas, and saying, what's the strategy to get those into the city? What's it going to take to do that, and how can we do it in a fiscally responsible manner? In Community Economic Development Division, that division, that division is actually exceeding capacity for the resources, they're doing a great deal of work, not only on the existing housing and voter approved levy, but dealing with next year and the forthcoming connections with the community on projects and processing current projects. Additionally, working diligently on the surplus properties, specifically Army Street and Samish Way, and as this body knows, have been working tirelessly on looking at establishing a shelter, a low barrier shelter, which meets an unmet need in our community. Found a great partner, have some good news to share, that they'll begin in October to open 24/7 service without any prerequisites to all members of the community who need it, and done completely on their own initiative. However, we certainly do welcome that service being provided, they have lowered their barriers substantially compared to prior use of their facilities, and that will meet a significant component of our needs. That's a holding action, and we do need to look at a more permanent facility that can accommodate that into the future. In looking at what's in the queue, I mentioned the Annexation Phasing Plan, our level of service issues, which is twofold, the actual metric of a level of service of how many parks per thousand, or how many response time for firefighters or police officers per thousand. That issue, as council is aware, has sort of been deferred to work more cooperatively over the next year or two with our budget and capital facilities. It's ongoing. I mentioned low barrier shelter and a low on Army Street. We do have a forthcoming stormwater update, working with our colleagues in Public Works. That does change standards, and we want to make sure our rules for development and information provided to the community are consistent, and folks understand the purpose and intent, and also how to design for it upfront. We have the final phases of LEED, dealing with our permitting process, we've had great success with our permitting process in terms of turnaround and time. We were talking with a prospective employee who works for King County, they, we asked them what their turnaround time was for single-family homes, they said five months in King County right now, and she asked us what our turnaround time was, and we said one week. So pretty remarkable, honoring the standards, meeting all our requirements, and showing remarkable turnaround, and that's a credit to all of the folks who work in that permitting, and our colleague divisions who participate in that, in development review. We have downtown design and economic development strategic actions, these are detailed in the materials we provided in February. Ongoing work, you keep chipping away at these things, cumulatively profound effect on our city, as well as the city center implementation. We are likely to extend an offer this week to an employee who will be coming on board to help us with the illegal unit enforcement. As council knows from approving the budget amendment, that largely allows us to have someone focused to do the deep research necessary to sort out those units that are legal, pre-existing non-conforming, and those units that are illegal but can be converted following our code, and those units that are just darn illegal. Each one is like a snowflake, each one has a unique fact pattern, it takes someone who has great deal of knowledge to sort through it, and we will come back and talk to you about it, but although we move slowly on these issues, we are deliberate, and we will go through all of the issues that have been raised in many of our existing neighborhoods that have a longstanding concern regarding this. We've caught up now in the running list, as council recalls, we place things on the running list so we can condense and be more efficient in terms of environmental review and our code amendments. There are four items that will be introducing to the Planning Commission at their meeting this month, just preliminarily. Usually we get discussion and direction, we come back subsequently. Our hope is to be able to advance it before you, perhaps at the end of the year, and we'll talk about those. We move to emerging issues, these are issues that might stay on that list for a while and come back. Last time I was before you, vacation rentals was a hot topic, but as you might recall, we only had two complaints last year, we've had three more this year. Five complaints are something we take seriously, but not enough to elevate it from the other work that we have ongoing at this point. It is likely we will be coming before you in the Planning Commission to do some amendments to ensure that the vision for the waterfront plan matches the approval. This is a fine tuning and addressing the changes between the two, and resolving inconsistencies. There is work that can proceed, consistent with the plan as proved, but we likely think we'll be back in front of you in the next year or so to make sure we're entirely congruent between the vision plan you saw earlier, our road alignments, and the proposed project. It's more of, you start with a broad vision, it gets truth by those who actually build it and the realities of the site, then you do your correction to make it match. We do have commercial code implementation, it is likely we'll be bringing a draft to the Planning Commission of that consolidation you heard from the University of Washington towards the end of the second quarter next year. We're actually getting the resource to be able to start that work. That work, as you might recall, is to take our myriad of designations and consolidate those, so if every area has a requirement, we should make it apply to everyone rather than repeating it over and over. It doesn't change our standards, nor does it change where things are applicable, but I think we might make it so someone can find out the uses that are allowed more quickly, and that will help all parties, I think on that. The tiny and affordable housing issue is emerging, it's been around for about 18 months or so. We are, actually, there's a meeting coming up this evening that deals with the potential for a tiny home vision, village to deal with some unsheltered folks. It's going to be done on a temporary basis, but we want to see how that might play out. And the use of tiny homes elsewhere, what does it take to make that work? DOAS is an acronym for the Dedicated Outdoor Air System. As some of you might recall, we worked very hard to, to limit escaping air from homes, that was Tyvek and RAP and all those other things we provide for new construction. We did such a good job, we had to put a whole house fan in to make sure that the air vented because we eliminated all of the leakage, and this is a modification of that that really ensures there's adequate air exchange in the system itself. And as many planners would say, their favorite aspect of our code, the sign code, a very difficult issue that makes no friends with anyone, and unlikely alliances, you know, we're going to have to deal with it. It's one that we see it coming because it's reaching a point. We are reaching out to the business community because we think we need their direct involvement. We think it's good for them to understand the benefit of doing that and reducing the friction, and I would imagine it will be before you, I can't say exactly if it's in the next year or the next two years. I can't say exactly if it's in the next year or the next two years. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Councilmember Bornham.
I'm surprised to hear you say the sandwich boards is something that's emerging because that's something the council has raised a couple of years ago and keep bringing it up. So this isn't an emerging thing from the council. This is something planning has been asked to take a look at and has told us for a couple of years already. And to hear now, this is maybe a couple of years off, that's, that's kind of hard to take because we've been promised that that was going to be taken a look at because we've had, it keeps coming up and keeps coming up and we keep hearing, well, we're going to look at that. We're going to look at it. And now we're hearing it's a year or two years off again. That doesn't instill a whole lot of confidence that it's ever going to happen.
It is.
I just got to say, you know, that doesn't instill much confidence.
It is important to us. It's a question of priorities. The intensity of doing a sign code, especially one that's as potentially volatile as sandwich boards and off premise signs, it's an effort that would be akin to ADUs. That's the kind of level of intensity. Right now, there are other issues that are pending, looking at the chart for long-range planning and for development services. You ask which issue should we remove to move that forward sooner? And that's our rub. If it does become, what makes it into an issue is that would be more, move it up in the chart is if there's a public safety issue, if there's an issue where we actually, if the chamber or the downtown business association asked us to help on that and we're willing to tackle it with us, we could move it up more soon. I'm not trying to dodge the issue. I'm not trying to diminish how important it is. It's just a priority.
So the blind travelers downtown who have complained in the past of it being a traffic hazard, does the services for the blind group need to organize to come forward to, to make sure that this, because they have before and brought it and I brought it forward to them. And, and we've said, yeah, they're going to, this is going to be worked on. And so they.
No, I hear you. The public works department has gone and worked to ensure there was clear space on the sidewalks, has, we have gone and enforced to get things that actually block the sidewalk, created those tripping hazards. It doesn't reduce the issue that's out there. It is a, again, I don't mean to trivialize this, it is a very important issue, but it is also a very emotional issue because ultimately it does result in the removal of a device that many people think are so essential to their business, their business will fail without it. And that's what we run into. Again, happy, I, I've taken this on before in other jurisdictions. It is based on the priorities we've heard, it's one that just falls away a bit. I can't take a more, I'll take another look and see if there's a way after the annexation phasing plan, for example, of advancing it.
Councilmember Liliquist, then Murphy.
Well, first I want to kind of agree with Terry. This, this has come up repeatedly and there has been requests by, for example, the Fairhaven Business Group for work on it. But as you say, Rick, as soon as they get into the details, then the agreement goes away and people see it differently. I wasn't paying close enough attention, I'm sorry to say, when you're talking about the rental inspection program. I heard you say that 220 failed first inspection, but I, I didn't hear the total number that had been completed so far. I'm looking for kind of a failure rate.
We have 641, of which 220, 321 passed right away. And then 114 passed after the first inspection and the rest are either missed inspections or still out there and works.
So that's a pretty large failure rate, I would say. It's not a 2% failure rate, it's a huge failure rate.
Well, it, it's after the first failed, we were able to get a significant, well, I think.
Well, again, a third still failed even on second.
I'll get you the specific numbers, but my sense, looking at the numbers, I may have been confusing, confused a bit, was, it was higher. It wasn't 50%. It was almost 500 of the 641 pa, are passed now.
Okay, so I just, if you could get me the actual numbers.
Yeah, I will. I'm just going off the, the small cheat sheet I have here.
Okay.
But I will get it to you. My sense was, it was a pretty high percentage. Important to note that more than half didn't pass the first time, but for minor reasons.
Yeah, I'm, I'm less concerned about the ones that, that as you say, you can write a corrective notice. I'm talking about the ones that.
Sure, we'll provide that to council.
Councilmember Murphy.
Just an idea about the sandwich boards to exacerbate the complications of it is one thing that I'm really grateful for is that the recreational marijuana store that's directly across the street from my house has now put up a boards asking people to please be quiet in our neighborhood. This is just a really complicated issue and I just want to support the staff in having room to be able to develop something amongst all of the priorities that they need to work on. So thank you.
Councilmember Bornham.
With the rental registration, I've had a number of questions recently relating to the database that's been put together. And it was some people's understanding that when the database was going to be put out, it was going to list the owners of the properties. And is that still the intention or is that?
We have a database of all of the properties. It's by address. We certainly have that information available. It's easy enough for us to do. We certainly could post it if, if you think there's merit to it.
Some people wanted to know in terms of the neighborhood, who's taking over the big.
And to be honest, our database would only be at the time they registered subsequent sales. We really don't, wouldn't have a chance to go back. It's not, it's not interrelated to the assessor's data, for example. We're not linked to it so we can make online, you know, real-time corrections, but we have the information. It's public record. We've had one request to make it searchable.
Yes, the other ones.
But I've been told you can import it into a number of programs that make it searchable. We're trying to figure out the best way of depicting it at this point. We do think we have it by address and by section, so it's, folks can find it. And a phone call works too. We're able to help and provide information if people need more.
Councilmember Hamel.
In reference to the vacation rentals as an emerging issue, is there a sense of a timeline for how long a regulation program would take to inventory and assess how many there are and then come up with an appropriate regulation system to, for these vacation rentals?
There's a number of approaches that are going on. There are a number of jurisdictions that are trying to solve this. Actually, in October, the American Planning Association at their state conference before Oregon and Washington is to joint conferences, is doing a workshop on this and we're going to try to see what's state of the art now. The development service staff and others sat through from long-range planning to, sat through three webinars to see what's current. What I can say is it's turned into a business. There are firms you hire that monitor this, that monitor all 15 websites. You can sign things up and follow up on the rules with those who advertise. Seattle sort of had a watershed agreement where they agreed with Airbnb, but it was largely to deal with the taxes that were collected. And that was the hoteliers' concern. They spent a great deal of money, lodging taxes reserved, it's used to advertise an area, and then others take advantage of it, not paying their contribution to it. So I guess at this point, jury's out on what the best fit might be for us and jury is also out on what the best approach might be. Some cities like New Orleans limit the number of days you can do a rental. Other cities prohibit it wholesale. So I think we're going to need to see how that plays out. If we find more issues coming forward, we definitely bring it forward.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much, Rick. Appreciate the update. Now, last item we have before us in front of committee is a draft resolution regarding the Dakota Access Pipeline. And I'm going to turn it over to councilmember Roxanne Murphy for introduction.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Well, this is an issue that I have been watching with very piqued interest as a tribal member because it pertains to how tribes get treated in consultative needs. When major business comes through and tries to have an impact through development or with any kind of dumping that may occur or any kind of impact, it's the government's responsibility to consult with the tribe and to find out what those impacts might be, hopefully work on those impacts in a partnership kind of way. And so that's why I was uniquely interested in how the Standing Rock Sioux Tribe would get treated. As a private business was hoping to build a pipeline through a major section of North Dakota that would go right next to their reservation and their lands. Unfortunately, as it appears, the government did not do a good enough job with consulting with the Standing Rock Sioux Tribe. Burial grounds have already been upset. This could have a major impact on the water that the tribe uses. That tribe has been moved around to so many different sections of that land. They have finally settled in the land that they're on now. And so they are fighting very vigilantly to try to protect that land. They sought an injunction to the development and that was turned down, however, by the court. However, it's amazing that the President of the United States and so many different federal agencies are temporarily halting the development of this pipeline to try to get that consultative work done. I think it's really important that we take a look at this in our community and right here. Again, how one tribe gets treated could affect how other tribes may get treated and we're the home in Watcom County to my Nuksek Indian tribe and to the Lummi Nation. At the same time, I just had a feeling that community members here would be pretty interested in this because our community really likes to, you know, get behind different environmental movements. And thankfully, this is a community that likes to support what tribal sovereignty is and what treaties can do and how tribes are really working in partnership to protect the environment. So I did a first draft of this resolution and I also wanted to express big appreciation for councilmember Liliquist. He helped write the draft that's in the packet. And I was just hoping to use this time to hear any edits that councilmembers might have and then hopefully in the evening, bring forth the motion to pass this resolution in support of Standing Rock Sioux and the consultative process.
Councilmember Liliquist.
Yeah, well, first I want to thank Roxanne. I did make some suggestions for additions and you accepted them and I really do appreciate that. One of the suggestions I added was the last recital, which talked about events that are now out of date. As Roxanne indicated, that was before the court had ordered, before the president stepped in for the federal agencies. And so I would actually like to move that if we do consider voting, I would move that we strike that last recital and replace it with one that reflects the events that happened on Friday. I'll probably have to read it in tonight, but it basically says that on Friday, the federal government voluntarily halted, called for halt to Dakota Access Pipeline work. They issued a joint statement and that the federal agencies will not authorize further pipeline work, quote, "until it can be determined whether we'll need to reconsider any of its previous decisions in light of important issues raised by the Standing Rock Sioux Tribe, et cetera." So you all have a copy of that. If we do decide to pass it tonight, I'll have to read, someone will have to read the entirety into it. But right now, I'm just moving that we strike that last recital and put in this more up-to-date recital in its place.
Second. And I'm just going to confer with our legal department. Peter, that is okay with you? We can make the change and bring it forward tonight? Okay, all right. Any discussion on our motion? Councilmember Liliquist? Any discussion? Okay. So all those in favor of moving forward the resolution with amendments for this evening?
Point of order? I think we just need to vote on the amendment first.
Oh, and then the change?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So we are going, so I have a motion to confirm the amended statements.
No, just to replace that one recital with the newer.
Why don't you say the motion, Michael?
I believe the motion I made is to replace that last recital with this new recital, which indicates the event that happened on September 9th with the federal government.
Okay. And you seconded that, April? All right. So all those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Councilmember Liliquist.
Teeny weeny tiny thing. When it was, the, the draft was put in there, it was, the word, one word was misspelled. It just says U E. There was an attempt to correct that to the, but if you actually look at the beginning of the packet, it refers that U E was supposed to be the word due, as in due process. I don't think we need a motion, but I think that the agenda item should match the title of the resolution. It's just a due process. That's all.
Okay. Would someone like to make another motion for the resolution? Well, we can, I guess, if we want to wait till we have the amended.
No, but we should carry it forward to the floor tonight. So we should do.
I move that we bring this, the draft resolution regarding the Dakota Access Pipeline in support of the Standing Rock Sioux Tribe to tonight's committee meeting.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. And now we are going to move to the approval of the minutes. We have two minutes in front of us. The first one is for committee meeting minutes for August 8th, 2016, for committee of the whole.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. The second, second set of minutes is for committee meeting minutes for August 29th, 2016.
Move approval.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Excuse me?
Yes, Michael?
Yeah, on the old or new business, Marie and I checked the record. What I requested is looking not into citywide fiber optic systems, which we already have, but looking into community-owned open access fiber optics. So if we could just change what old and new says to reflect the motion, Marie and I already looked at the tape to verify what the motion really is. Is that okay with the, with that amendment?
Are we comfortable with approving the minutes with the changes? Okay. So again, all those in favor of approving the minutes for August 29th, 2016, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. And older new business. Councilmember Hamel, then Bornham.
Great. Thanks. I want to correct something I said during my remarks about housing on August 29th. I said that the vacancy rate was 99.8% for sales and rentals of housing. That should have just been for rentals only, so I want to clarify that. It doesn't change the fact that most working class families still can't afford to purchase a home in Bellingham, but I wanted to clarify. Also, the 99.8% number comes from the Runstead Center for Real Estate Studies at the University of Washington as a report on vacancies. This is the tool used by professionals in the housing industry, such as the Opportunity Council and Bellingham Housing Authority. It's also used by statewide housing agencies. It was also in the report that the Herald referenced in the recent article about the groundbreaking of Eleanor Place. According to the Opportunity Council, it is the only report of its kind. An alert citizen let me know that there is a newer version of the report than the one that I referenced, and there has been an improvement in the vacancy rate, but unfortunately, the improvement was only six tenths of 1%. Six tenths of 1% still means the vacancy rate, according to that report, is still less than 1% out there, placing an extraordinary burden on working class families and seniors with low incomes. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Councilmember Bornham.
Yeah, Dan had referenced the Eleanor Apartments. I just want to mention that I was at the groundbreaking and had a chance to speak at the groundbreaking, representing the mayor for the Eleanor Apartments, which was an 80-unit senior center. And I also, I wanted to mention something in connection with that, and that is the cooperation that took place with the sighting of that and the York neighborhood. Because we sometimes talk about neighborhoods not being willing to take in more infill. And then this was a project that they worked together on. They talked about the neighborhood organization, you know, wholeheartedly approved this project because it was the kind of infill, it was good infill that worked and in an area where it was designed for in terms of multifamily housing. So once again, just as they had stepped forward with the Samish urban village plan to take in more density, again, here's neighborhoods being willing to say, yes, we, this is a good project and we'll gladly work with this to make it happen. So that was one of the items that I just wanted to make sure that was highlighted because it was pointed out to me. And the other, this is a tough one to bring up, but I feel I need to bring it up because I've had so many people talk to me over the last few weeks. And that is about the concern with people and the public comment and not feeling, not feeling safe in talking about, you know, coming forward and, and concerns that's been expressed. And it keeps coming up. it keeps coming up in the neighborhood blogs. It keeps coming up when I meet with neighborhood groups about what are you going to do? How are you going to make people feel safe? And it reminded me, and I was reminded, to look at how I felt when I first came before the city council. And the recognition that most people that come from the neighborhoods to speak are scared to death of this council, not just this council, but in council in general. We have people that come, you know, lawyers and industry people whose jobs are to be public speakers, piece of cake. But for most people, public speaking and coming before this scary-looking group, it is. When I first came, before I was on the council and I was a neighborhood rep, I first came here, I would stand there and just shake. Tim Johnson might even remember me shaking up there because it's, it is really scary. And I think we have to go out of our way to make sure that we let people know that even if we don't agree with what they're saying, as long as it's not outright, you know, attacks or something, but we have to try to be tolerant so that they can feel comfortable coming forward. And I'm only bringing it up, as I said, you know, in terms of talking with people, that I would, you know, just, just bring it up, that we will try to go out of our way to make sure they feel comfortable. Yes, three minutes is real, you know, we've set these limits. But people get real nervous up here and they're trying very hard. And I think we need to just make sure that we make it as safe for people to come forward to talk with us because I think that's one of our biggest duties to the public as public officials. And that is to be open and available and make them feel comfortable that we're going to listen to them. So I just wanted to bring that up and, you know, because it keeps, people keep bringing it up. And I know how hard it is up here for us, but I think this is, I just want to reiterate to the public that we are going to do that. We are going to make that, you know, try to make it as safe and as comfortable as possible.
I think that's a very valid point and I think that it's really important. One of the things that I've always tried to say is that we want to have a fair, safe place for public comment. And I really do want to encourage people to come to the public comment and to express themselves. It's a very vital part of what we do is to listen to the public. And I do want to encourage people to come forward. And yes, we are going to try and stick to the three-minute rule because that's, that's what provides equity for people. But it's a very valid point, Terry, and if there's anybody out there that has concern, please come to us, please come to me. But I just want to ensure that everyone has the opportunity to share their thoughts on their community and that we are providing a safe environment. So thank you for bringing that up, Terry. And I give you my word, and I'm sure the rest of the council feels the same, that we want people to be engaged in the public process and do appreciate you coming forward. Councilmember Liliquist.
Thanks, Pinky. Yeah, Terry, I remember when I came and spoke as a citizen and I'd say my piece and I'd sit down and I couldn't even remember what I just said because when you're up there, just, you know, blooming, buzzing confusion. It's hard to even relax. So it's a very scary situation. I would like to say personally to the community that I actually value and take more notes from people that I don't agree with because they're usually telling me things I haven't thought of or that I need to consider. So I actually value those dissenting opinions in a sense more. They strengthen my ultimate, you know, decision, or at least might, you know, help me feel better about my ultimate decision in the end. So personally, yes, I completely agree. I want to hear everyone's opinion, especially if it may be different from my own.
Thank you. Anyone else? I just wanted to add one more thing on that is that following the three-minute rule has nothing to do with the subject matter. And I think that that got misconstrued in the public comment, that it was the topic, but it was never the topic. I think it's important for us to discuss all aspects, but it was actually just following the three-minute rule and not the topic. So unfortunately, that got misconstrued. Councilmember Murphy, sorry.
Well, I really wanted to apologize to the community, but provide also a little clarity along with this distinct apology. The situation that happened that community members are complaining about is that the council president and I were quote-unquote laughing like little girls. I would love to explain the scenario of what occurred, the actual scenario. We had an elected official that was sitting in the room and the meeting had gotten underway. And during the public comment, a note was passed from administration and I handed the note to the council president and said, you may want to acknowledge that the elected official is in the room. And then the note was opened and the note from administration said this exact same thing. So that was what the brief laughing was about. It was not meant to be at the expense of the community input that we were receiving. And I'm sorry that it was perceived that way. It was a very brief moment in time and I'm so sorry that the community member was affected that way. It's not in any way I wish to act in the future and I want to respect the thoughts and the concerns about that.
Okay. Oh, Councilmember Liliquist.
Can I change topics?
Sure, but let's be speedy because we're about an hour behind.
So I recently went to an event on Blanchard Mountain, which is not actually in Watcom County, it's just south of here, but it's contiguous with the Chocah nuts. And it has to do, there's some state representatives there and key decision-makers in the state agencies. It has to do with finding money to buy out the trust lands there and buy new trust lands that have benefited from those trust lands so that the Blanchard Mountain can stay as it is, a recreational area and an economic draw for our area. It's kind of outside of our jurisdiction, but I think it's not outside of our economic sphere or realm of interest. I'm just wondering if the administration has an opinion, if you have an opinion. Do we as a city want to weigh in and say that we support state efforts to take those trust lands and put them in a preservation status?
As always, I try to look at the big picture. And the big picture is, obviously, there's going to be other things that come before the council that we talk about investing in that are a little bit closer to home. So I guess my, my thought is, obviously, the council can take a position on any issue they want. I, and I wouldn't be opposed to them being able to do that, but I do also look at what, what we need to do in our own community. And I guess that, that would be my concern is, as a legislator, sometimes you get a lot of requests for a lot of things and other elected officials that are in a local community sometimes need to prioritize. Most important, not, not something that's good that we think they should do. So I guess that's the only issue I'd throw to the council is just to make sure that we don't dilute our message by supporting many things that come along.
Yeah, and I'm not sure where the funding might come from. I know there's around five and a half million already put aside by the state, but they need another, find another 7 million. I don't know where this day we get it from. So in making this request, I really don't know what would be pushed out at the other end.
Councilman Bornnaman?
Yeah, this is something that I'm very interested in, you know, that because that preservation of that Chocah nut area, you know, we had a wonderful champion earlier with Harriet Spinell when we, when we got, oh, trying to think of the chunk of property that we got brought in next to Larrabee. But she came forward and we got the preservation of that. And it was that idea of trying to preserve that because it's such, it's, it's such an iconic area. It's one of the only coastal mountain things in Washington that comes down.
I think a lot of people think it already is preserved.
But?
I think a lot of people think it is preserved and it's not.
I know. So I'm, yeah, I'm very much interested in it. I don't know where money comes, but if there, you know, in terms of, yeah. You know, as we make statements about other areas we just did or will tonight.
Yeah.
That doesn't flow directly from us, I mean, here. And we're willing, and this is another area that's very close. And so if you were to bring something forward in that idea related to that, I would definitely second it.
Councilmember Hamel?
I think, I think Councilmember Bornnaman just made my statement for me. I would like to know more about it and fundamentally, philosophically, in a total agreement with this, I just would need to know more about what we would be asked to be supporting.
Okay, I can work and get that information.
That'd be great. Okay, and with that, we are adjourned till 7:00 PM this evening.